Time is one o'clock. I would like to call the meeting to order. And again, the time is one o'clock. Ms. Ramirez, please confirm the quorum.
Yes, ma'am. We have Trustee Dr. Mackey, the Vice Chair, and yourself. We have a quorum.
Okay, I'm gonna wait till we get settled in the audience.
We have Trustee Steen as well. Continue to have a call.
Welcome, Mr. Steen. Number two, the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. James Massey to provide the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good afternoon. I will review the evacuation procedures so that we prepare to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We will move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot at the McCullough and Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify the appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we'll also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to ensure we are prepared. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Number three, public comments. Ms. Lily Carpenter, please proceed with public comments.
Thank you. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have four in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Yentur Two.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang. Lulac, growing up brown. It is a pleasure and I enjoy and with great pride being here. And today, I want to focus on Dr. Mackey. Dr. Mackey, you have blessed this board and being Black History Month, more so, I can understand your culture and I know that you understand mine. It was not easy for you to walk in these steps, like it has not been easy for me. But we're here now and we're here to do great and help our CEO Rudy Garza and Chairman Janie Gonzalez do great with CPS Energy because it sustains us, it keeps us alive, winters especially. Summers, we can do a lot of things in the summers, but it's not the same in the winter. So I do have, it's, there's so many words I can use to thank you for your dedication to this board because I know you have been very loyal to this board. There's not enough words for me to say and thank you because I know that nothing comes easy, but you worked hard at it. Thank you. And I also wished I was there with you. He's an amazing man. You know who I'm talking about, my president. But thank you for going and representing us because we need him again and thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Yentur Two, followed by DeeDee Bell Morris. Please cue the timer for four minutes to allow for translation services.
First of all, can we restart the clock and then that way we can hear her?
Okay, I'll go ahead and start again. Thank you. Yes, hello, everyone, and good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I hope you are all doing well on this beautiful day. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Yentur Two. I am the founder and CEO of Deaf Association of San Antonio, and we represent the deaf community. I want to tell you I'm very grateful because I was able to go to SAWs and partner with them. It's a great partnership and it's very nice to see that you guys are also trying to have that partnership as well. I wanted to give a little bit of insight into the deaf community. Most important to us is accessibility. Some deaf people aren't able to read and it requires us to have a sign language interpreter for accessibility. Some can read, but every once in a while, there's a few of us that struggle. And so CPS Energy or electricity customers do receive notices in the mail, maybe something about the weather, different notices, and they're not able to read them. So I encourage you to add some kind of accessibility signer or interpreter that they can, are able to watch these notices. And I mean, as far as the news, there's not a lot of, unfortunately, in sign language interpreters, captions sometimes aren't perfect, sometimes there's a miscommunication. It's easier to have a sign language interpreter, as you know. So I would like to add, just to see about providing interpreters for those services if you plan on having some kind of a public meeting or if there's going to be an outage so that they can prepare. I think it's very important for the well-being of all customers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is DeeDee Bell Morris, followed by Alan Montemayor.
Good afternoon, DeeDee Bell Morris with Public Citizen. I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number Six. I'm asking the board to approve the change to the bylaws establishing the Community Input Committee. It's a long overdue change to the Citizens Advisory Committee that since inception lacked transparency and accountability to the public. All of the work of the subcommittees is important, but especially for the one that will address rates, finance, and business. As we continue to experience extreme weather and record-setting temperatures in the summers, it's critical that CPS Energy design rates that encourage conservation and eliminate rate waste. Rate reform is also long overdue in light of the last two rate hikes, but also for any other rate increases coming in the near future. CPS Energy has come a long way in terms of engaging the public and forming the committees like the Rate Advisory Committee and then that other rate committee that happened last year ahead of the rate increase. So doing good work there of really engaging the public and being transparent. So I hope that can continue with this committee. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your input. Our final speaker is Alan Montemayor.
Good afternoon. I'm Alan Montemayor, Alamo Group of the Sierra Club. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak with you today. I don't take it for granted. And I've said, as I've said before, thank you for keeping the lights on. It's something that's easy to take for granted, but we shouldn't do that. As all of you are aware, SAWs is CPS Energy's biggest customer and CPS Energy is SAWs' biggest customer. There's great opportunity for increased cooperation between the two groups. SAWs just came out with an energy plan. I think many of you have seen it already. If you haven't, I encourage you to get that from SAWs. They claim they can save about 10% of the energy that they use. That would be huge. So I'm looking for increased cooperation between SAWs. and CPS Energy, particularly where you can put solar arrays at SAWs. facilities. That would be a wonderful boon to San Antonio, particularly if you could put energy storage with those solar arrays. Most of you know that I've been pushing this large solar array at the H2, at the SAWs. H2 Oaks facility. That would be a wonderful thing. It'd be a win-win-win for the citizens of San Antonio if you can do that. The Citizens Advisory Committee of CPS Energy has for many, many years been relatively opaque to the citizens of San Antonio. I hope that the reforms that you'll be putting in place will remedy that and that there will be more actual citizen input rather than just the members. And I think that that could be a great thing for you guys. I really appreciate everything that you guys do. I do take an opportunity when I see a crew out there to say thank you because too often people are angry at them for obstructing traffic or whatever, but they're out there at all weather and actually making a difference. So I do appreciate it. As far as the getting rid of coal in San Antonio, we would really like to see you guys accelerate that process, move away from natural gas. I know you still encourage people to have natural gas appliances. I wish you could put an end to that and just really move towards renewables, which are turning out to be the cheapest and most reliable of our resources, particularly when combined with batteries. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
That was our last registered speaker. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Gonzalez.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Item number four, which is Chair's remarks. So there's three items I would like to highlight today. We'll start with first connecting with CPS Energy and our ongoing commitment to community events. And so I believe there's going to be a graph behind me. There are several events that will take place in March. So we have an exciting schedule, a pretty robust schedule, to be frank with you, and that is, again, our commitment to outreach to our community, specifically focusing on paying assistance with their bills. So you'll see the latest schedule behind me for community resource fairs, weatherization drive-throughs, and small and medium business support fairs. The customer engagement team is always available to help our customers. As you know, we have strategic locations throughout the city of San Antonio. And as stated, you can visit our website and learn about all these exciting events that will be taking place. And I want to stress again that these are, a lot are focused on assistance with paying your bills. We have several programs as well as advocating for small and business participation and for those of you who are interested in weatherization. And so specifically, one will take place March the 5th. This, again, will focus on Small and Medium Business Support Fair at Brook Hall Oatrium. The weatherization drive-through will also take place on March the 5th from 3:30 to 5:30 at the Grace Baptist Temple parking lot. Again, we're at your, we're here to support you. The next item I want to bring attention to, and yes, I have these two lovely flags, and it's not to swat Mr. Mackey over here, but they're mainly, and I bring these out and I won't be humorous about it, but so often we ignore these. And so I'm here to point these out, that if you see these, do not ignore them on your, on your, on your yard or any public domain that you see these flags. It's really important. With spring approaching and landscaping in your plans, it's important, again, to call it 811 before you do any digging in your yard. Underground utility lines such as gas, electric water, electric, electric water and communication cables are hidden below the surface. More than one-third of gas pipelines are damaged in San Antonio caused by us citizens by ignoring these lovely little flags. Let's not do that. Again, make an appointment, call us. You can do it online. You can dial the number and please avoid potential hazards. Prevent, you know, again, every penny counts. This will help us prevent costly repairs and then, of course, it will also protect yourself and your community. And just on a quick note, March 18th is National Gas Workers' Day. So again, those of you who are in the, who support that division, thank you very much and please do not ignore these. These are important. And yes, you can use them to also swat some mosquitoes, but that's not what we're going to use them for. So the last thing I would like to highlight, first of all, I also want to thank my colleague, Dr. Mackey. He was extremely active during, again, in February for Black History Month. And so he was very active with the employees. He was out there in the community. And again, I want to just again thank him for being, representing not only the Board of Trustees and the public, but also just again being a role model for those who work here at CPS. So thank you, Dr. Mackey, for that. So something that's dear to my heart, March is Women's History Month. It is a time to recognize the vital contributions of women at CPS Energy and in the broader energy sector. Their efforts in pushing the boundaries of customer support, engineering, energy technologies, policy, and sustainability have been invaluable despite facing significant historical obstacles. Edith Clark, who emerged as the first female electrical engineer, set the stage for electric power systems that we rely today and her innovation work in the 20th century. Today, leaders like Maria Zuber, a geophysics and vice chair of the President's Council of Advisor on Science and Technology, carry on this legacy by advocating for sustainable energy policies and tackling climate resiliency. In the realm of renewable energy, we've also gained tremendous insight from women, including our very own Dr. Francine Rometto, who is a staunch advocate for environmental stewardship. This Women's History Month, we must celebrate and recognize the wide range impact of these women. The pioneering efforts of Edith Clark alongside the contemporary endeavors of Dr. Zuber and Dr. Francis Rometto illustrate how women have been instrumental in propelling energy, innovation, and sustainability. Their contributions highlight the critical need for inclusivity and diversity in shaping a sustainable future. This acknowledgement is more than just a celebration. It is a call to ensure equal opportunities in the energy sector and beyond. Highlighting the achievements of these trailblazers and the women of CPS Energy serves as an inspiration for the next generation to forge ahead and contribute to societal progress, underscoring the importance of ongoing efforts towards gender equality and exclusivity. On that note, thank you very much. We have an exciting agenda this afternoon and we're going to go ahead and move on to item number five, which is the approval of the consent agenda. We have the following items. A, payment to the city of San Antonio for January 2024, additional transfer to the city of San Antonio for F Y 2024. B, board committee assignments. C, procurement items. We have none.
Move to approve Consent Agenda A, B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does the board have any further discussions before we vote? Wait, I'm gonna make sure that everybody has time to look. Mr. Steen, are we good? Ms. Shannon Ramirez, please proceed with roll call.
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to regular agenda item number six, Community Committee Bylaw Amendment by Ms., by Ms. Kathy Garcia. Ms. Garcia, can you please proceed?
Kathy had a personal issue come up today, so Ashley is gonna present. Let me just lead into this presentation by saying, you know, we have really worked hard over the last few years to, you know, bring as much, you know, community input into all of our decision-making processes. You know, two and a half years ago or so, when we created the Rate Advisory Committee, there was a robust discussion regarding, you know, whether or not our Citizens Advisory Committee should be doing all of that work. And it was determined because of the structure of the C A C that we needed to form a Rate Advisory Committee, you know. And at that time, we were also working to rebuild trust with the community and there was a lot of reasons why the RAC made sense in that moment. Now that we've kind of gotten through a lot of what I'd call our stabilize, stabilization strategies, it felt like the right time to come back, take a look at the C A C bylaws, get input from the C A C and members of this board on what the expectations were. And so I want to thank Shanna and Ashley and all the, Kathy and all the team that interacts with the C A C on a regular basis. This includes a lot of the feedback we got from the C A C on how to move forward in a manner that really kind of combines the spirit of the RAC with the historical significance of the C A C. So what's being presented to you today incorporates all that feedback and, you know, was, was done really in cooperation with conversations around this board, this board table. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you, Rudy. As Rudy noted, I'm Ashley Glotzer. I'm a director and senior counsel here and I am standing in for Kathy and presenting. So as we move forward with implementing Vision 2027, which will transform and modernize our utility, of course, our community input committees are not any different and this is part of looking at our citizen input groups, also seeking to modernize and transform them. So this presentation is about taking our current community advisory committee and moving it to the community input committee. So I'm briefly going to go over the Board of Trustees' resolution that this board passed in August and then I'll walk through the process that we went through in developing the red lines and the final bylaws that are before you today. Ultimately, of course, that led us to taking the Citizens Advisory Committee and turning that into a re-envisioned Community Input Committee. And then I'll walk through the key proposed bylaw changes. And at the end of this, we will request approval of the changes to the bylaws that will establish the Community Input Committee, including its functions and duties. So this past August, the board did pass a resolution which directed us as staff to look at both committees and then form a single advisory committee comprised of a broad and diverse cross-section of customers. This would also kind of change it around a little bit to where the committee would provide inputs on matters for CPS Energy that would be more assigned based by the board. So the input would be developed primarily through the work of three specific subcommittees, which we'll go through in a second on what those are. And then we envisioned that this will also have routine updates provided to the board by the committee. And then this would also continue to provide valuable two-way communication between our community and the, and the utility. So Rudy just went through this, but I'm going to go through the process that we took to get through these collaborative changes. So of course, we did work with you all as a Board of Trustees and received direction from the board for this re-envision committee. We also listened to our community. We wanted the changes to be reflective of the stakeholders and community opinions that we've heard. We did spend a lot of time with the current C A C members. We wanted their input and understanding about what would make the committee a better committee. So a lot of the conversations we had with them are reflected in the red lines before you today. And then we wanted those changes to align with the core values and the customer needs. So we did consider those as we developed the red lines. And then before you today are the C A C bylaws for this year in 2024. So the key changes from the C A C to the C I C, there will be a name change to the Community Input Committee. We did work to revise the purpose, mission, and vision. These changes were really just to clarify the bidirectional flow of information between the community and the board through the C I C. The C A C has done that historically, but we wanted to clarify and modernize that language to make clear that there is that bidirectional flow of information between the two. One of the changes will be that at least two of the at-large members will be required to reside from outside of the city of San Antonio. So that could be the unincorporated area of Barre County, or it could be in one of the suburban cities. This was important for C A C members. We've had several at-large members that have served from suburban cities or areas within our service area, and so that will just be part of the red lines. We will add four new members that will be appointed by this board that will reside within each of the four quadrants that make up our service area. This will take the membership from the C A C to 19 for the new C I C. And then we're also going to establish three subcommittees. So one will be Power and Technology, one will be Rates, Finance, and Business, and the last one will be Customer Relations and Communications. And so these three subcommittees will handle the majority of the work for the C I C, which goes into the next point. We're going to adjust the schedule for the full committee to meet quarterly. So of course, the full committee can handle topics that aren't squarely within one of the subcommittees, but the subcommittees will be meeting in the off months to do that for each year. And then, of course, the full committee and the subcommittees can hold additional meetings as necessary. Of course, if certain topics arise or certain requests from the board come along, there might be a need to meet more frequently than once a month. And then we also encourage members to attend at least four community meetings per year, such as the CPS Energy Town Halls. This was important for the current C A C members. They, they wanted to emphasize this as a way for them to be in the community and enhance that communication from the community to the board.
Yeah, let me just add there, remember, we do 1,800 events a year, you know, in the community somewhere. So any one of those events would, would qualify under this requirement. So should be pretty easy for them to, to meet this requirement.
And then the bylaws also clarified that these meetings will be open to the public, just as the RAC meetings were. And then we also clarified reporting. The C A C did report to the board, but that will be a more formalized process with written reports or verbal reports to the board as necessary. So then taking into next steps, if you all approve this today, we will want to move quickly in appointing the four new members. There is some transition, transition language in the bylaws that say that there's 120 days to do that, but of course, we will work to move faster. Overall, the whole bylaw changes have 60 days to be implemented and we wanted to do that because we didn't want the current C A C to have to be struggling to get all of these done before their March 13th meeting. So that's that. And then current members will roll over. This was not intended to replace all of the current members, but we will also seek to clarify from them if they want to continue to serve. But the expectation is the current membership would continue and we would add four more. And we remain committed to obtaining public input through a more efficient and transparent process. And we request your approval of the bylaw changes that will establish the Community Input Committee. And thank you. And then, of course, I can take any questions.
I do have a question. Is there going to be an application process?
We can have an application process if the board needs help with appointing the quadrants, then we're happy to do that. Of course, the CPS Energy staff is, can help in any way that you all feel is necessary.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the community? Okay, there's more questions.
That one where it says require, requiring that at least two of the at-large members reside outside of the city of San Antonio. Is that residing in Austin, Houston, San Antonio, or where?
The bylaws also require that they have to reside within our service area. So they would have to reside within the service area, but outside of the boundaries of the city.
Does it say that for this one right here?
It does, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm glad.
Can you repeat the, the question and then the answer? And can you speak up a little bit more, Ashley?
Yes. The question was whether or not, because there's that change in requirement that two of the members reside outside of the city of San Antonio, could that be Austin or another place? And the answer is no, because one of the qualifications to be a member is that you have to reside within our service area.
The service area of CPS.
So I've been a little bit thrown off because on February 22nd, you all emailed us a draft of these bylaws and, and now I'm sort of scrambling because you, just as I came to sit down today, I had something in front of me which shows that you've got it in a more final form and a number of things that I had noticed have been corrected and that sort of thing. So bear with me as I go through this.
Is this the voting item?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion? Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, now we can go ahead and do it.
First, Ms. Glotzer, I appreciate your presentation today and your diligent work on this project. And here are my questions and concerns. First, when the proposed bylaws for the Community Input Committee were mailed to this board on February 22nd, the transmission emphasized this language, quote, "This email and its attachment are privileged and confidential attorney-client communications and attorney-work product and should not be shared or reproduced in any format," close quote. This puzzles me. Why are proposed C I C bylaws cloaked in this manner? It seems to me it would have been quite helpful and wouldn't have caused any harm that I'm aware of if I'd been allowed to share and discuss this information with current and past C A C members and individuals who served on the RAC as well as others. So that's my first question, why this restriction?
I marked it as privileged and confidential, so I'll go ahead and answer. All of our drafts are treated as privileged and confidential prior to them being made final, largely because many of the input that I get, the changes that are requested, I can't make for a legal reason. And some of your input that I'm taking, I'm using to form my legal opinions and give you guidance on the changes that are acceptable.
I also noticed that the proposed amendments were not included in our board packet and therefore not made available to the public. All of this, correct me if I'm wrong, but, and so as I, as I go through my questions and comments, are we, are we going to be able to put up on the screen slide? are we going to be able to put up on the screen slides, slides of the proposed minutes?
I'm sorry, will you ask your question again? I don't think I understood.
As I go through my questions and comments today, are we going to be able to put up on the screen up there, slides of the proposed minutes?
The proposed minutes?
Yes.
The proposed bylaws?
I'm sorry, yeah, the proposed bylaws, yeah.
No, I don't have it for the screen. Thank you.
Okay. And so, Ms. Glotzer, this is not directed at you in any way, but as a side note, I'm surprised and disappointed that we're being asked to approve amending these bylaws, and they've not been provided to the public or made available to put up on the screen today. Just question, is that an example of the transparency that's being constantly mentioned as one of our core values?
The current CAC bylaws are available on the public, and these will be posted as soon as I have something final to post.
Yeah. So, and this won't take long, this proposal is possibly setting up the CIC for non-success in overloading volunteer, non-paid members with not only four meetings a year, along with the time required to read and absorb preparatory materials, but also two CPS Energy Board meetings, four CPS Energy Public Input Sessions, as well as a minimum of three committee meetings, again, along with the time to read and absorb preparatory materials. So there's a significant risk that you're going to wear them out by demanding too much. And when that happens, unfortunately, you end up with absenteeism and attrition. Along the same lines, another thing that can happen is that civic leaders who are only participating to serve their community are the ones most likely to falter, while the activists, who in some cases are employed by special interest groups, do show up and over time begin to play an outsized role in the deliberations, with the result that CIC votes and decisions may not be representative of the overall community, but instead reflective of a small group of highly motivated, industrious, and intelligent activists. And let me say this, while I often disagree with these activists and don't believe that in many cases their views reflect the views of most of our customers, I do respect them for their preparedness, diligence, and persistence. And by the way, I would have liked to have discussed these concerns with, for example, Reed Williams, our very capable past RAC Chair, but could not because of your confidentiality Now, this is where I've been scrambling a little bit. I was saying, in addition to substantive concerns about the proposed CIC bylaws that I have, and I had six typos, but I just looked through and you all caught four of them. So I have two typos and minor corrections, which would not change the content of what's being proposed today. And assuming this item will be approved today, do we want to authorize Ms. Ramirez to make these corrections after the fact? Or do you want me to bring them up now, item by item? I had six, there are now two. They're very trivial.
You can bring them up now.
Okay. On page seven, and now I'm going from what you sent us on February 22nd, so I don't think, I don't know if it matches up with what you put in front of us today, but on page seven, in Article II, Sections 15 and 16 are inconsistently and ungrammatically worded. On page one, these are minor, but for the record, in Article I, Sections 1 and 2, bidirectional isn't hyphenated. But having said those, here are, and I did have three substantive changes, but you've actually corrected one that I found as I was sort of looking through everything quickly. So here are two substantive suggested changes. First, in Article IV, Section 6F, the word "replace" is used twice. In the second instance, the proper word should be "nominate." And I hope all of that matches up with what you've got there. I think it's to make clear that although the City Council puts forward names, in a sense nominates them, it's actually this board that makes those appointments. Once again, I would have liked to put a slide up so the public could see it. But third, I mean, second, in Article IV, Section 8, labeled "quorum" of the CIC and committees, it says a quorum is a majority of the members. And then Section 9, labeled "voting," indicates an act of a majority of those present at the meeting at which a quorum is present shall be the act of the CIC. So if you have a full complement of 19 members, then 10 members would be a quorum, and a majority of those 10 is six. That means six members could approve a recommendation that would be treated as a decision of the CIC. And I think that the RAC bylaws had a better approach. And let me quote Article IV, Section 6 of the RAC bylaws, and I quote, "There shall be an effort extended to achieve a consensus of members present for all issues that require decision-making. It's particularly desirable," I'm still quoting, "it's particularly desirable for an issue to be resolved through consensus, but the chair may decide to proceed with resolution of a given issue through a vote. If the chair deems that a vote is necessary, issues to be voted on shall be decided by a 60% supermajority," in the case of the RAC, that's 13 of the RAC, and that's close quote. So although based on my past track record, I'm not likely to get any support from my colleagues on this, I maintain that mandating an effort to reach consensus and then some sort of a supermajority, perhaps even greater than 60%, is the better approach. I assume that there's no pressing reason these bylaws have to be adopted today, so my preference is that more work be done and that this same item be placed on the agenda for our next board meeting, which is in three weeks. However, if I'm compelled to vote today, I'm going to vote against these altered bylaws for the reasons I've outlined. Should these amended bylaws be approved today, it's my hope that the things I'm concerned about will not come to pass and that this recast CIC will function as set forth in Article I, Section 3, entitled "Vision," which I like, and I'll quote, "The vision of the CIC is to represent a broad constituency of the community, devote the necessary time to learn about the utility business, engage with members of our community, importantly," that's my word, "be respectful of the comments and views of others, and provide thoughtful input on issues representing our community and not partisan values and concerns," close quote. But I'll say I'm skeptical. And finally, I request that should a vote be taken today, our General Counsel please includes my reasons for voting no in the minutes of today's meeting, and thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Any additional comment? There was a couple of questions there that I did want to answer. I want to make closers. So that there's no confusion. There are no changes other than this being a clean copy to the most recent copy that was circulated to all board members. That was the second draft that was distributed to you all, incorporating all of the changes I received from anyone to date. So I was a little confused with some of your comments because it's the exact same draft that was circulated to everyone without change. It's just a clean copy. Also, just want to make clear, I do understand the distinction between nominate and appoint that you are attempting to make, and the word choice was deliberative here. Also want to note that the number of committee members that are suggested is 19, and so the numbers were off in the discussion, but I think that your point was made. And I do understand the distinction between majority and supermajority, so I just wanted to again make sure.
Right. So then maybe, I was working off of February 22nd, and you're saying that another draft went out?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I want to make sure that we're clear. I made sure that more than one draft went out, that calls were also made to all trustees for an effort to make sure, again, you provided input. So I just want to make sure, how many times did we send it out, and how many calls, and how many emails did we make? Two drafts were circulated and follow-up emails were sent to everybody.
And no call was made to me, so.
No phone call was made.
Yeah.
Will that help in the future, phone call?
No, I don't mind, I don't mind this public deliberative process.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
In other words, I think sometimes there's a push to say, let's do this in committee, let's do it over the phone or something, but I, actually, I think it's, rather than just show up today and everybody with no discussion vote in something pretty
No, I think it's great. I just want to make sure that we're always clear to the public that each trustee has provided copies, we email, we do our best to communicate, but I'm all for public discussion. Thank you. Ms. Ramirez?
First of all, thank you. I appreciate that you worked with me along the way with this and that most of my suggestions were taken, and the ones that weren't were probably not legal, so I appreciate that too. I think the time has come for this, and this is just at the right time, and I'm really glad we're moving forward. I actually did have the same question as Trustee Steen, and I did ask Ms. Glotzer about it at the beginning. I don't understand why this wasn't available to the public as part of our agenda today. And that does bother me a little bit, that we're actually voting on something that the public could not see ahead of time. So is there a reason why we couldn't have done that?
I mean, if you would like to make, it said, what's available to the public? I didn't have a final draft to make available to the public. If you say, well, then take the last working draft, I would just suggest to you that in my experience, it was, well, that doesn't have the changes I suggest, use the prior prior draft. And so trying to figure out which drafts to include is then difficult. This is consistent with how we have done a lot of changes to our documents. It's not an exception. Until we come to a final draft, we make it available to the public once it's final, so that was my intention.
Is there a reason we couldn't say, we have this discussion today and we have the vote at our next meeting, so the public could see the final version before we vote on it? And
There is no prohibition against that practice. It's not how we've done it in the past, but it's absolutely acceptable.
Well, I guess I'll see what others think. I just think it should have been out to the public. We're voting on this, and Mr. Steen did say, it's supposed to be transparent, and we're approving bylaws that weren't available to the public to give us their feedback. That does concern me a little, but I'll put that on hold for a second. On page nine, I hadn't really noticed this before, under subcommittees, the CIC shall have three subcommittees that must meet at least three times annually. And getting to Trustee Steen's point, this is, this is an ambitious ask for people to be on this. I had, I had asked, and you did, change it from required to encourage to attend some of those outside meetings, so I'm happy with that. But I'm just wondering if the subcommittee doesn't necessarily have to meet three times annually, if there's just nothing on their agenda, is there a possibility for the chair, I guess there'll be a chair of the subcommittee, could just, is there a chair of each subcommittee? Yeah. Could the chair just say, we don't have anything for this time, so we're not going to meet?
Well, the idea was to keep the attendance requirements exactly the same as they are. Right now, the full committee meets once a month, so every member of the committee meets once a month. With this revised schedule, every committee member, every member of the committee would again meet once a month, sometimes less than that if they don't sit on all of the subcommittees. That's why we changed the requirement for the full committee to only meet quarterly. Therefore, each subcommittee and the full committee all meet quarterly, thereby all of the members are again only required to attend once a month.
Well, and I'll just say, Dr. Romero, that the attendance requirements, or the attendance, and just in general, I was at that CAC meeting because I wanted to hear directly from the members whether the time commitment was more or less than they could give us. And the feedback that's in, that made its way into the document is from the CAC that they thought was reasonable. So us moving to quarterly, full quarterly meetings was to give them time to work on the things that the board might want them to specifically focus on in committees, and even the committee structure that they came up with was feedback we received from the CAC saying, here's how we think we ought to do this. So it's not just us, it wasn't just, you know, us trying to come up with the right structure, it included a lot of feedback from the CAC.
No, I get it. It's just that sometimes a subcommittee doesn't need to meet, and I don't know why we need to press the point. I wondered if we could have just said, three subcommittees that normally meet at least three times annually. It's just so specific that the three subcommittees must meet at least three times annually.
We can make any changes to the draft right now if that makes you more comfortable.
Yeah, I think if we were to just say, you know, that normally meet, I think that would be helpful. And I guess my last thing is to say, I respectfully disagree with Trustee Steen on the whole consensus, supermajority language from the RAC, because I think if anybody could handle that well, it was Reed Williams, and he did the best he could with that, but it was clunky. And I think we always, we always had trouble with that piece of it. So I don't agree with that change, but I do think that since we've made a couple of changes here and since this wasn't available to the public, I would not be concerned with waiting to vote on this until our next meeting, just to, so nobody can tell us we were being untransparent on this one. I think if there's an opening to be more transparent, we should, and I would support that.
Mayor?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation, Ashley. The things that I would like to just highlight are, number one, thank you first to the members of the RAC, as well as the former CAC for their hard work over the years. These have always been volunteer positions, but particularly the last few years have been much more weighty for the community, critically important, in fact, post-Winterstorm Uri and the work that they've done. And so appreciate all the time and effort that went into those. If this new committee matches the intensity of the level of work that was accomplished at the RAC, that is a tall bar, but I would expect that the pace of that work will slow down a little bit, and that's reflected in the meeting schedule. A couple of things, I view this as the next major milestone in an ongoing conversation that we've had, frankly, about four years now. And the input that you've received to get us to this point in terms of the structure of the CIC, as well as the bylaws, I'm comfortable moving forward. I think it's a good structure, it's a good document, and I don't see any major issues that I would take with it. I do love the fact that there are three standing subcommittees that are focused on these major areas. That's what the community has been really focused on, making sure that, you know, for instance, there is an ongoing body of advisors that would guide us on generation portfolio issues. There's an ongoing body of advisors that would be looking at rate structure and being mindful of the different constituencies and customers that we serve, and the fact that we will have now advisors on the process by which we are a public-facing company. The thing I think is most important to keep in mind, though, in this 19-member group is that it is advisory. So ultimately, again, it is going to be up to the Board of Trustees how to interpret the guidance. And so whether it relates to this issue of majority versus supermajority, how we define a quorum, I'm comfortable with what the document says. Obviously, bylaws are, we're accountable to them, the CIC is accountable to them, the Board of Trustees oversees them. So I'm comfortable getting this group launched, and if we see that there are areas that we have to adjust as we move forward, I would be comfortable doing that based on the advice of the CIC. But this is a great step forward and evolution in our process, and I'm ready to go. Thank you.
One moment, please. I had several people.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr.
Go ahead, Dr. Romero.
Just being able to think about this minute. I hate to be difficult, but I'm not going to vote for this today, because I really do feel like the bylaws for the Community Input Committee should have been out to the public ahead of time. I don't blame anybody for it. I think they're really good with just, I would suggest that one change of normally meet instead of must meet for the committees. But I think this is important, and I don't want to be reading this in the newspaper tomorrow, that the trustees approved bylaws for a Community Input Committee that the community didn't have any input on, which I know is not true, because I know a lot of people had input on this, but I still think it should have been out there for the entire community to see.
Thank you, Dr. Romero.
Mr. Steen.
Mr. Steen.
Just to respond to a couple of things, Dr. Romero, and you mentioned that by having the mandated reaching, try to reach a consensus, and then if you have to vote, you know, do it with a majority, and you described it as clunky. And so my point would be, sometimes clunky's good. It means there's a lot of discussion, it, nothing, sometimes you think, well, it's not going well because it's not going smoothly, but a lot of times the good decisions come when there's a lot of, you know, clashing and different points of view.
Thank you, Mr. Steen.
The other thing, Ms. Ramirez is talking, but, and I'm subject to being corrected, but I think my numbers were correct, and I don't know which you were referring to, and I'll stand corrected if I am, but I think they were correct.
Thank you. Mackey?
I am, I'm very pleased that the committee has chosen this resolution, and they worked hard on this item. I support it. But I'd like to say that I hear this so many times, transparency, reflect the committee, reflect Reflect CPS Energy. And I hear these things come up. However, these individuals have worked hard. They're expanding the horizons on this. And I'm going to support it, just like it is. But remember, these two things are going to come up. Because all the time, there's always a couple of negative things to people's point of view when they want to say things. But they don't think about all the employees, all the vendors of doing the right thing for CPS every day, of working hard every day. That's what I appreciate. This right here is great. But something's going to come up, and I'm waiting to mention this in a few minutes. Because I love hearing this reflect. Because some things haven't been reflected in the six years I've been on this board. But I'm going to show you some information in a few minutes. So I support this 110%. And I'm ready to vote. Ms. Gonzalez.
Anything before I do roll call? Okay, roll call for a vote. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
No.
Chair? No. All right. To approve the bylaws fails.
Okay, with that being said, I'm going to need direction from this board on what happens next. Because.
I'm going to do that next.
Well, let me just say this. The current item included a 60-day provision to implement. So, you know, whether we post it today or we post it 30 days from now, there's an opportunity to take feedback from the community if we miss something. So again, we are bringing to the board what the board asked us for. So if you want us to do something different, I would appreciate some direction.
Yeah. I think what I heard from my colleagues, if we have any feedback, if we can do it now for proposed changes, I think we're all in favor for the, to be clear, we're all in favor for it. Yes, it was a lot of work. All I'm asking on my behalf is just to make it, provide the feedback and then post it. And then we vote on it in the next board meeting in March.
Can I say something, Ms. Chair Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we talk about feedback on this board. I've been here six years. I've heard this for several years, talk about feedback. Every board member has an opportunity to call the CEO anytime, anytime for feedback. But there's board members refuse to talk to the CEO, refuse to communicate with the CEO. But they want to go around the CEO to get things done. That's not the way you run a business. People have been on committees all their life. And it's a shame that they want to play games with this board and this CEO. I'm just, I'm not disappointed because I see it happen every day. So I'm not going to get upset about it. But that's just the way it is. So, hey, I support whatever you want to do. And Mr. Gonzalez, it's just the way the world goes. That's it. So don't worry about it. We'll get it down the road.
Dr. Romero?
I support everybody 110% too. I support this change in the bylaws. I don't want to do anything different. I just want to have it posted.
Yeah.
I'm very much about process. I don't want somebody to be able to say, you never posted it so the public could see it. I'm not saying we have to do outreach. We have to do anything. It's not about me having more input. It's about the public having more input. And, and I understand that you were doing it right up to the last, and it just wasn't possible to do that. And it's absolutely fine. And I just think we just post it for the public and then we vote the next time. We don't have to do any, I don't think there's any direction to give, except let's just post it.
Back to the same thing, just post it. That's, I'm in concurrence with Dr. Romero on that. Any other feedback, Mr. Steen?
Should we just take a motion to have this brought back?
Yes. All I want is a motion to bring it back to the next board meeting in March.
I'll move that item.
I thought there was a 60-day, did you say there was a wait period to sign on this?
No, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll put this, we'll figure out whether to put this on the consent agenda or the regular agenda the next board meeting. We will post a clean version of the bylaws and take any, with directions on how to provide us feedback. And then we'll go from there.
Just as a matter of course, I'm not sure you need a motion. I just think the chair can put it on the agenda for the next.
I want to make sure we have a motion so we can have it on.
Is that, and what's going to get lost in all of this is that there's virtual, I'm hearing virtual unanimity that this is the right move for us to make. There's some disagreement about how long the bylaws have been visible to the public.
That's it.
And so I think it would be a good form for us to take a vote where we all signal our approval of this pending some additional input on the bylaws. That's it.
And I will say, I will put a time constraint on the feedback. Because again, there was a lot of effort that was put into this. And so transparency by posting it, but as far as colleagues, time bound. Again, this is time, it's important that we get this done for the community. We have an ambitious agenda. We have many things that we prioritize. We just got a rate increase support, and it's important.
I'll make a motion to reconsider item number six at the next board meeting.
Second.
Roll call. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Mr. Steen.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair? Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven, procurement update. Ms. Maria Stanton, if you could please address item number seven. Very, now I can hear Maria. Gracias.
Good afternoon. I'm Maria Stanton, and I'm here representing our supply chain team this afternoon. And I have a procurement update to share in addition to the efforts that we have invested last year in support of local economic development. This is the information I will be going over this afternoon. And I will call out procurement process overview as an example, also some of the supplier development efforts, annual fiscal year procurement spend, and then what we're going to be doing in fiscal year '25 to keep the momentum going. But first, just wanted to confirm that the efforts that I will be, or the information I'll be sharing is aligned with our community partnership and growth portion of our mission and vision 2027. Increased local spend is an important part of delivering our mission and the execution of our Vision 2027 strategy. We are municipally owned, and so we are focused on trying to keep our dollars local. And because we are municipally owned, we procure in accordance with our procurement policy that's aligned to the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 252. And in it, it states that we may award contracts based on best value, best price, most qualified. But we always give consideration to a bidder's, or we may give consideration to a bidder's local, small, and diverse status in evaluating proposals. There's approximately $2 billion available for award of purchase orders, which is what we've seen in recent years. And we have a highly mobile team of supplier development folks who are working out in the community every single day, looking to connect new suppliers to our bid portal so that they may receive bid notifications. And we also work very, very closely in supply chain with our business units so that we can separate scopes or what we call debundle projects so that we may have an increased opportunity for local suppliers. On average, every dollar that is spent with locally owned and operated businesses has a great multiplier of two to four times the original value. And then last but not least, I want to share that the fiscal year '25 target for local spend has been established at 70%. The chart that you see next to it shows why we may not be able to reach 100. The, there's 10 categories of scope in that chart, and we call them material groups. And so for fiscal year '24, each line item will show you how much was spent in, not awarded, spent in fiscal year '24. And our data is showing that half of the non-local spend went to these particular scopes. However, we do have some, some good news to share as far as the procurement spend broken down by fiscal year and also by category. And as you can see in those numbers, diverse, small, and especially local spend are trending in the positive directions that, that we want to see. However, you can see the, the greens show we've done really well in some categories, but the yellow are highlighting our opportunities. And those are veteran, service-disabled veteran, Hispanic-American, and Native American spend. The good thing is, the percentages show that there's opportunity for improvement, but the dollars themselves are increasing. So I'll highlight the Hispanic-American spend as an example. Although it shows that the percentage may not have, went down. The good thing is, the spend itself went up by $35 million or 38% from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. And all of this is attributed to a lot of the partnerships that we have in our community. I will call out organizations such as LULAC, because they've been very instrumental in bringing weatherization contracts, contractors to our town halls. And double ACP has been critical in connecting us to more African-American owned businesses, as has the FCC, the Fair Contracting Coalition. I will share the FCC in their last published report recognized CPS Energy as most improved an opportunity in the community. There's also a lot of Chambers of Commerce 28 that we work with. The CDFIs that you see up there, there's five in Bear County. But we work with Sage and Lift Fund as examples, but we work with all of them, including UTSA's Institute for Economic Development, which has opened up a lot of opportunities in connecting with small local suppliers. And last but not least, Supply SA. That is our two-year pilot to work together with 13 of our peers and look for standardized procurement practices, all together working with the goal of increasing opportunity here in our community. And we have some numbers to show that all the partnerships have paid off. The top chart shows a number of suppliers that we have registered, and they're all trending upwards if you look at the fiscal years. And then the bottom chart shows the number of events themselves. Our supplier development events have increased by about 130% since fiscal year '22. The picture on the bottom left, that was a partnership with LULAC on the west side of town, and that was direct outreach for veteran suppliers. It was very successful, and we had a lot of our peer agencies there with us as well. Here's a different view of local and diverse spend. And it's also, it shows it's trending upwards, which is what we want to see. So the partnerships have paid off, but also the debundling work I was talking about and working with our business units. One data point in particular, there were 73 contract opportunities that were valued at $856 million. Those were awarded to 193 unique suppliers last year. And so we still look for opportunities within to maximize more connections to our community. And it's, it's, there's some things that have worked for us. But here's what we're going to be focused on in fiscal year '25 so that we don't lose momentum. Working with our business units, continue to debundle opportunities where possible. Also hosting roadshows and town halls, be it CPS Energy or partnered, co-hosted with others. And the picture on the bottom right, that was the ERP preview town hall that our chair was able to help guide a lot of bidders our way. And so that was a success. And then also scheduling meet and greet sessions for our business units with newly registered suppliers. Those have been pretty successful as well. And then last but not least, actively engaged in our Supply SA so that we can figure out, we can share our best practices, but also learn from our peers. And I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Yes, board, any questions, feedback? Mayor?
I just wanted to applaud this work. I know this is a little bit buried in the, in the board agenda. But I don't want to undersell just how enormous of an impact this will have the procurement processes in the city for economic development purposes and the growth of small businesses. And, and folks may have seen the reference to Supply SA. We have policy priority, and we have a community direction to increase the amount of contracting and procurement we do with locally owned businesses as well as minority women-owned businesses. And the amount of spending that CPS does because of the size of the organization means that there is a huge potential to increase payrolls and to expand and facilitate the growth of small businesses in our community. So I'm glad that CPS Energy is making a priority out of this. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead. No, it's, thank you. It's okay. I have a very active vote, which I appreciate. Great. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Dr. Romero.
Just real quick, thank you for this too. When you were talking about Fair Contracting Coalition awarded us most, most improved, can you put that in context of the time period they were looking at?
They run their numbers, I believe, is it two, two years? Yes. There are a lot of, a lot of efforts underway for the last couple of years. And they grade us based on how accessible we are and just the partnership in the community. And so I think all of that combined and plugging in with them and showing them really firsthand the work that we've been doing, I think they understand kind of where we're going. And so we've gotten some recognition.
And I can add some, I think when I first came on board, four years, well, four years ago, we had a D.
Yes, ma'am.
And now we have a B-, I think. So we've, we've come a long way. And I know there's more feedback, so I'm going to leave my comments for last. Mr. Steen?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Stanton, for your procurement update. And if we could put up slide four.
Probably going the wrong way here.
Slide four. So here you're assuring us that our procurement process is aligned with Chapter 252 of the Texas Local Government Code as well as CPS Energy's procurement policy.
Yes, sir.
And my interest today begins with your first bullet point, which is, you know, I'll just, you can read it up there. Purchasers are awarded based on the best value or best price, and consideration is given to a bidder's local slash small slash diverse status. Of course, anybody following today's proceedings understands awarding a purchase order based on best price. But would you kindly elaborate on what's meant by best value as an alternative to best price?
Yes, sir. And I'll use, if I may, Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 252, 043, Award of Contracts. And it talks about the ability in a competitive solicitation where you can award based on lowest response, or lowest price bidder, or you have the ability to award based on best value, which may include price as one of the evaluation criteria. So you can either go one way or the other. We have seen both, and it just depends on the scope.
Continuing to focus on that first bullet point, precisely what, what's meant when you state that, and the word consideration, consideration is given to a bidder's local, small, diverse status?
Yes, sir. So our business units, when they're evaluating proposals, they may award points based on a bidder being local or small.
And, and, and this is sort of the same, a different way of asking. And how, and how are you and your team guided by Chapter 252 of the Texas Local Government Code when you move away from awarding a purchase order strictly based on best price or best value?
So that, that is aligned with the Local Government Code, Chapter 52, too. It gives you those ability to award based on low price or based on best value.
But does it, does it mention in, in 252 the consideration given to a bidder's local, small, diverse status?
I'm just going to step in really quickly. I, I really don't want to put Maria in a place to give anybody instruction on how we do legal guidance here. So I'm just going to pause and tell you.
All right.
Our Texas certification does, and that exists.
Okay.
Outside of what he's just stating. I'm happy to answer any of those questions in a, in a private setting where we can discuss legal guidance.
All right. At our last board meeting, when it was announced that our longtime 16-tier-one metrics were being jettisoned in favor of a group of eight, one of the new tier-one slash enterprise metrics was labeled as, quote, strategically investing in the community, close quote. In essence, that's what you're presenting. In essence, that's what you're presenting on today, right?
It's a portion of it, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and by the way, I used the verb "announced" because this board did not vote on the drastic changes in, in metrics that occurred. And the target for that new metric has been set at 70%. And I'm still not clear who exactly set that target. And actually, I might ask you, Mr. Garza, who, who was the decision-maker when we set the target at 70%? Who was sitting at the table? Who made the decision?
To be clear, my targets, which is the purview of this board, have not been set yet, and that will happen soon. But they are consistent with what was presented to the board, I believe, at least, that'll be the starting point. And as it relates to the, the, every board meeting, you know, informs my decision-making process for what the board's interested in. And we've spent plenty of time around this board, you know, this board dais, talking about our impact on our, our local economic, you know, development, you know, future. So 70% is consistent with the trajectory we have been on. If local spend is important to this board, which I believe it is, then it should be reflected in how this board holds the CEO accountable. Again, you know, we, all the things that, you know, Maria talked about, all the ways that we go about, you know, achieving these results, which are fantastic results, and I got to give our organization credit, we scour the globe looking for new partners to do business with that give us the best chance to be successful. So 70%, and when we try to define how that particular strategic, you know, pillar that's in Vision 2027 is defined, and is easy to understand, local spend is a very easy, you know, metric to understand, and 70% is consistent with what we have been able to achieve, you know, if you just look, 55, 67, 68, 70. 70%, I think, is a, is a fair number and, and continues to represent a stretch target.
All right. But we're talking today about a target having been set at 70%. And again, I, I'm going to, you didn't answer it specifically, but did Rudy Garza, our CEO, say at some point, "This is going to be our target, 70%"?
The organization went through a process, which we talked about last board meeting.
At some point, you have to have a decision. I'm just asking who made that decision? Because I know it's not this board. I wasn't involved in it.
The organization presents targets that we believe are achievable and stretch, and we did that last board meeting.
Mr. Garza, can you explain what you, what they mean by the targets and what 70% means?
So 70% means that, you know, there are categories of spend that we should be able to source locally. Now, there's some stuff that's difficult. Buying coal is not available locally, you know, so there are certain types of contracts that you have to take out of the equation, and everything else that's left is, you know, opportunity spend. 70% of opportunity spend, we'd like to, to, to get done locally, which I think is absolutely direction that we receive from this board on maximizing our impact on the local community. I mean, we're sitting with every governmental entity's leader at Supply SA talking about this issue right now.
These, these metrics are important, and I'm not getting a, I'm sorry, but I'm not getting an answer. Who decided? Was it, was it a committee? Was it Rudy Garza? Was the board involved?
Mr. Steen, if I, if I may, I misspoke, I apologize. So internally, we are recommending the 70% target. If you look at fiscal year '24 for local spend, we almost got to 75%. However, our research is showing that there's, we're tracking a number of buyouts, of closures that are facing our local community. And in addition, our current inventory looks like it's balancing out, and so we're not going to need to make as many procurement items for some, some materials, if you will. So that is what we considered in, though we made 74% local this past year, this future year, or this current year, my apologies, is we're, we're looking at 70%, is what we're recommending.
Before we speak, Mr. Steen, Mr. Mackey wants to have a comment, and then I will, after Mr. Steen will close out if possible.
I like this, and I understand the 70%. I don't care, you know, I, I do care that local get a big portion of this. I remember being on this board my first two years, when we started going out for bid for audit, different committee, and we talked about 70% for the, the major player, 30% for local minority. So I've been hearing 70% on doing that. So I don't know how that reflect on this, but I remember that we've been doing that. And we've been talking about that whenever we give jobs to major businesses that Ms. Gonzalez brought up, that we reflected with small business, a percentage of small business the first year she came on board, because she was an advocate for small businesses. I remember that clearly. However, I want to say something, too. On this same page, if you look at African-Americans and you look at Hispanics, the reflection of the citizens in this community, you look at it, and you go from 20 fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '24, how is it that African-American vendors $190,000? That's all they received in that year? With all the vendors that are applying for the jobs, applying for these vendors. Then it goes up to fiscal year '21, '22, it goes up for Hispanics and African-Americans, $2 million out of a $3 million budget, 100, $1,190,000 budget. That's not even, was it, what it says? .03? Then it goes to .52? And then we get to 2024, what it says, $11 million, 1.24? And you get Hispanic, what we get, 13.6? What's the ratio of citizens, Hispanics, and San Antonio mayor? 62. What is it for African-Americans? 10? Between 8 and 10? You don't get, what, .103? You know? Does that surprise me? No, I've been seeing it for the last six years. But we talk about reflect, we talk about diversity, we talked about representation, the community involvement. Then you leave out the community, and you want them to be involved in this? But we see the same people talking about the same thing. But I keep watching this. It's embarrassing. Very, very embarrassing. Mr. Garza, y'all have made some improvements. I like to see better improvements in this area. Are you hearing this from me? So you have to go back and say, "Who said that?" Yes, Dr. Mackey said it. So we don't have to hear these games. Because a couple of things happened that I, and I discussed this with Mr. Garza. I discussed it with him. I was embarrassed about something that transpired several months ago. But I already discussed it. See, I did, I'm going to leave that to him to handle, because it handled under his leadership with another department. But I discussed it with him. That was embarrassing. It's the same category when vendors come up here, employees come up here looking for jobs, African-American, Hispanics, working for the city 16 to 20 years, and they get a rush interview, and they gone out of here. Or a vendor come here, have worldwide vendor come up here and can't even get an interview for this. It's embarrassing to be a, a company, a this type of company, and we talk about representation, being transparent. Now we being transparent. That's the elephant in the room today. It's embarrassing. I am very, as an African-American, I am embarrassed, because certain leaders, certain people sit here, allow that crap to happen. But I've been sitting here waiting, but you don't hear it because I go straight to Mr. Garza, I go straight to the leadership, and I share it with them. But nobody want to talk about that. That's why I mentioned it today. Remember when you were saying transparent, reflect, and diversity? What does it mean, diversity? I asked Mr. Garza and his team, what does diversity mean? What does ethnicity mean? What does culture mean? Hey, he's about the only one to understand it. Other people can't even explain it, because they don't know. Again, don't, don't care. They don't care. They only care about things that they care about. That's what I am embarrassed about. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Steen?
Well, before, I, I'm sorry, Dr. Mackey, you know, I've been working on supplier diversity issues for 30 years in my career. And, you know, I want to say that, you know, that, I don't know how you collectively agree that this is going to be a, you know, an opportunity area for us if we don't come to the board and talk about it. I'm proud of the work that we have done over the, the last five years. I mean, those numbers tell a story. Now, do we need to do more for, you know, historically underutilized businesses across the board? Absolutely, we do. You know, Hispanic-owned businesses, African-owned, African-American-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, you know, women-owned businesses, you know, we, we work to get them into our system, to, to, to teach them how to successfully, you know, do business with us, to grow their participation with us once they get in, to, to take small businesses and make them bigger. And, you know, we do all that trying to create best value for our customers, you know, and again, we, we've done that while still offering some of those lowest rates in the state of Texas. So, so local absolutely is a focus, and then the, the work that we can do in all the other categories comes along with that. So, you know, I, I've, I've been committed to this as a policy issue, you know, for the two and a half years I've been responsible. We will continue to do better, but, but I, I don't want Maria and the team to step away without us acknowledging the work they've done to get us to this point. Those numbers, I, I tend to look at things in, in absolutes. And, and again, you know, when, you know, from one year to the next, we've doubled our African-American spend. Now, again, can we do better than 1.95%? We should aspire to, absolutely. So I, I, I agree with you on that.
You made, you made the improvement, because look at 20 fiscal year '20, 100 out of 1 out of 748 million dollars, 190,000. But just think about that. Even though you've made the improvements, you know, yes, I, I see improvements. I guess, I, I see improvement, just like I shared with you, and I'm going to say what I shared exactly with you. You're the leader of the company, but you have subordinates underneath you. Does that reflect what your, your job and what you're saying? Does that reflect that? Do they understand the difference between ethnicity, culture, diversity, and opportunities to apply for jobs or to bid on things? I'm not saying give a, give a job or hire a person that's not qualified, I'm not saying that. But give them equal, equal opportunities for these, for these things. That's all I'm asking.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, and I think this discussion highlights why this community needs to make this a priority. And the focus of the Supply SA initiative, again, isn't to recognize, not only is there work to be done in an agency like CPS, but there's work to be done in public institutions all across this city. I do appreciate the fact that the Fair Contracting Coalition is one of the accountability organizations and one of the toughest, and has recognized the progress at CPS Energy. But this is all under the philosophy of every dollar that's spent on behalf of the public should be an investment back into the public. And if we're talking about goals, we have to be intentional. I'm comfortable with the 70% because that was a stretch from where we were even four years ago. But ideally, you know, if there were the availability of firms in this community to do the work that CPS requires, we should be angling for 100%. I mean, I, I want as much of the San Antonio taxpayer dollar to be spent supporting San Antonio workers and businesses that employ San Antonio residents. Part of the Supply SA initiative is not just to get folks intentional about what they're doing with the procurement, but also to encourage registration and to facilitate new firms being able to get through the bureaucratic morass of what currently is 13 different agencies with their own procurement processes, technical assistance, trying to get suppliers to register as vendors, and then ultimately get everybody working off of one, one application, a universal application. So making it easier for firms to do business with public entities here in town, and then recognizing that we have, we have work to do in terms of goal-setting and achieving our goals, which, again, if I look at this chart, I see good news and progress. I see that we have, we still have work to do, but we're moving in the right direction.
Mr. Steen?
All right. Well, I'm going to, I'm, I've asked the question in many different ways, but I haven't gotten an answer about who makes the decision, because it's, it's bigger than this. It's now one of our Tier 1 metrics. This procurement, well, strategically investing in the community, and this 70% has been established. Somebody has to make the decision on that. Are you making that as a CEO? I'll leave it after this, ask me one more time.
Can I answer the question? I mean, we don't longer have Tier 1 metrics. That, we, we went through...
We're, we're in a period of transition, but they were Tier 1.
But they no longer...
I am responsible, Mr. Steen. I'm responsible. I don't know how many times, how else I can say it ultimately.
At some meeting, some, at some point...
I am responsible for setting the metrics for the entire organization.
All right.
I'm responsible.
So, okay, thank you.
And as a chairman, I'm the second-most responsible person that we've gone through a transparent process for the last couple of years, officially moving away from Tier 1 metrics. We, we've had a year, two years of meetings. I'm very confused, Mr. Steen, when you keep referring to the past. I have a lot of respect for you, but where I will always disagree with you is that we've moved forward. We've moved forward in a public process. We no longer have Tier 1 metrics. We're holding Mr. Garza accountable through a process that we have, and we do it through several ways, in the public forum, through our committees, and we adopted Generation Plan, we adopted a Vision 2027 plan, and those are all part of the new processes. So Tier 1 metrics do not exist anymore.
I think, I think Tier 1 metrics do exist, they're just called Enterprise Metrics now, right? It's just a new name. What do you call the eight that we...
But you continue to reference the old names. So if you're going to reference the metrics, correct.
Tier 1/Enterprise, we're in a transition, but sure, I'll say Enterprise, or 8 Enterprise Metrics, all right?
Yes.
Clear that out.
Are we clear?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. And, and so one of them is strategically investing in the community, just a review, and it's at 70%. And you're saying you, Rudy Garza, said it is 70%? That's fine, okay. And then, Ms. Stanton, I'll ask you.
Yes, sir.
Does the burden mainly fall on you as our Vice President of Supply Chain to hit or exceed that 70% target?
In partnership with my peers, sir. I'm the, I'm the facilitator, but my business units own the budgets.
So if Mr. Garza turns to somebody and says, "This is personally responsible," is it such you?
I am, yes, sir.
You are, yes, ma'am, okay.
Me and my direct reports are responsible for the entirety of our business performance.
Right. So this is finally, 70% seems to be a high number, given the nature of CPS Energy's business, where very particular and special types of equipment and materials are needed. And, Ms. Stanton, and, and you know I have high regard for you and the valuable work you do, and I, and so I'm going to put you on the spot, maybe you're not going to answer this, but how, how do you feel about being given a target of 70%?
We achieved it before, and so we will strive as a team to, to get to the 70%.
All right. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't think anybody who works for CPS sees their job as a burden. It's a job description, duties as assigned. But I think what I've witnessed, and I will, I've been the champion from day one to see more debundling and diversity, is not just because I'm a small-business owner, but it's only because, I will tell you, just my freshman year, there was a lot of decisions that were made on behalf of citizens that were not equitable. What we've seen is a demand and an appetite for more equitable investments and decisions across this city. A lot of it stemming from the recovery of the pandemic, as well as many other things, COVID, wintry year, the pandemic, I mean, the nation is at a crisis, we have more poverty in the city of San Antonio than we've ever had, we have meeting after meeting after meeting. How are we going to address the debt that we have, right, that took place? Well, one way to do it is to stimulate the economy to creating jobs through small businesses. We can't have it both ways. We can't be demanding Rudy to figure out how to pay down the debt and then not also support small businesses' goals that contribute to the economy. So what is it? CPS has a big responsibility, more than just keeping the law... CPS has a big responsibility, more than just keeping the lights on. We're the biggest economic engine in the city of San Antonio. And every trustee here has different passions for different things. What I've heard from my colleagues as a freshman and as a chairman is we want transparency, want to make sure that we're physically responsible. We want to make sure that we give back to the community. We want to make sure that we have public input. We want to make sure that there's diversity in procurement and in participation. We're a lot of things to a lot of people, and it's important. And it is our responsibility to be a lot of things to a lot of people. But I will take that one. Yes, I've advocated. There is no secret that I've advocated that we leverage the economic engine that we are to recuperate from what we're all suffering from, high inflation, not enough jobs. It is our responsibility to do that. It is. We are more than just, you know, making sure that we have a tight budget. You know, that's important, too. So, again, Rudy, I want to thank you specifically for championing this, and our mayor, and those of you who are on the board who understand the value of contributing to our economy in more than different ways. And I want to thank the small business units that are out there championing this. And I know this is not a burden for you. You wouldn't work for CPS if you didn't believe in the mission. So, again, I want to thank my colleagues. And we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. Next item is eight, which is community reports. And while reading the community reports out loud, the following reports are available in a board book for review. Audit and Finance Committee, A&amp;F, meeting held on 01/22/2024. Employee Benefits Oversight Committee, EBOB, meeting that was held on 01/22/2024. Does the board have any questions on the committee reports? And please take your time to review them. I believe no board member has any questions or comments. They will be accepted as submitted. We will now move to Agenda Number Nine, which is the CEO's recognition. Mr. Rudy Garza, can you please proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Our corporate communications and marketing team in the month of February did some work that I think is extraordinary in terms of the storytelling that they were able to do. And every day, the folks coming up here are part of our customer strategy team. They're in the trenches with our customers every single day, helping them, you know, manage their lives and manage their energy consumption and doing the work that this board expects out of us to help customers get on track. So, today, I'm going to show a video that's going to highlight the amazing work of our customer strategy team. And what this is, is these team members reading letters, feedback we've received from customers about them, which is super heartwarming, and I hope you enjoy it.
Hello, my name is Belinda Ramos, and I'm one of the managers in customer service. We encourage all of our customers to fill out a comment card and tell us about their experience.
The first one reads, "He was very kind and understanding of my situation, very professional, and provided amazing services."
Leroy was one of the most helpful reps I have had as a CPS Energy customer. All my questions were answered with timeliness and accuracy.
When I read a comment card, it really makes me feel happy to know that I've changed somebody's life literally sometimes. They come in with a weight on their shoulder, not knowing their options, fearing that their power might be turned off. And when they leave, that weight on their shoulders is really taken off.
This one is Spanish. This is una tarjeta en español. It says, "Una excelente persona, muy profesional. Me apoyó en todo lo que le pedí. Muchas gracias por tener personas como esta."
She went out of her way to help our family. Really good customer service. Thank you.
Very professional and polite, very nice, even when I was in a bad mood.
Joanne is always engaged, not only with me, but other clients. She goes out of her way for her clients.
Maria was very professional, very helpful, and pleasant to speak with. She had a lot of knowledge about the job, very kind and had great customer service. I do try and provide that.
I love her. It seems like every time I come to pay my bill, I go to her. She's great, well-done, Laquita.
When my supervisor brings a comment card to me, those good ones, man, I tell you, it really does something to me. I'm like, yeah, you know, I really did good. And I feel good about myself when I do good. It makes me want to continue to do what I love to do, which is my job. I mean, I love helping the customer.
Madam Chair, can I say it was fun watching you all react like yourselves on the big screen? That's a shock, isn't it?
Where's Leroy at? Leroy and I went to Burbank High School. Hi, Leroy. Long time ago. I know his wife. We're really good friends.
Well, these videos really do highlight our one-team culture here at CPS Energy. This work is hard. Customers are in some state of distress, you know, and these are the folks on the front lines every day that while we're all in the customer business, nobody's closer to the customer than the folks around this table, the folks in our call center that take those calls every day, folks out in the field. So, to all the customer strategy team, just recognize that we appreciate all the work that you all do. And again, every now and then, one of these videos will get me, and this one got me. So, I thought it was perfect going into the summer, coming out of the winter, going into the summer, to just thank you all for what you do and tell you to hang in there and keep up the good work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Oh, picture. No, maybe we could publish this on the public access TV.
You know, are we working with the city on their system?
Are you talking about the board meeting itself or the commercial?
No, these. The video.
We could pay to have it accessed on the public access.
Wait, do we have a partnership with the city? I'm sure we can get it to do it. We get a little discount from the city of San Antonio. No, but to keep things, to continue to keep things seriously here. If we could please make sure that we move to item number 10, which is review the action items.
Yes, ma'am. With respect to the current action items...
I think the biggest action item, I think, is again that we publish...
The rack. Not the rack, I'm sorry. I was going to go over the current open item list, not from today, but otherwise. We had an action item that was a request from Trustee Steen regarding mitigation information for our top risk that will be closed today by the end of the meeting. With respect to the remaining open action items, they will all be closed on March 25th meeting. That includes Trustee Steen's request to include the comments in his minutes from Agenda Item Nine, as well as Trustee Steen's request to include the basis for a no vote on Agenda Item 10. In addition, there will be... Trustee Mackey's written comments that were to be included in the minutes, as well as Trustee Steen's written comments that were to be included in the minutes. From today, I have three action items on Agenda Item Six. By unanimous motion by this board, we will include the Agenda Item Number Six from today up for discussion and vote on the March 25th board meeting. The second action I have is also on Agenda Item Six by Trustee Steen to include the reasons for his voting no. The last action I have on Agenda Item Six, and I have it down from the entire board, is to post the then-current working draft of the CIC materials with the board packet prior to the board meeting.
Can you repeat the last one, please?
Yes, I will post whatever the then-current working draft, because it's not final until you vote and approve it, with the board materials for the public prior to the board meeting. So, that will be the Wednesday prior to the board meeting that it's posted.
No, we're going to post it right after this board meeting, the version that they got today. We're going to post it right after this board meeting, and we'll give the public 30 days to look at it, and we'll come back next board, or however long we have.
Okay, that's not 30 days. And I would just note that if you change anything from today, I don't want to create confusion in the public about what they're seeing. So, I am happy to do that, and we will keep updating it as we change it.
But you would include the small changes we made today? Like, I just had a two-word change.
Yes, I would like to discuss the changes that all of you submitted today because I think some of them are not...
Here.
I would not, I would like to discuss them with you before we incorporate them.
Okay, and make sure that we have a time bound with that discussion. So, does the board feel five days is enough? Can we get them all solidified by the end of this week, by Friday? Wait, wait, Mr. Steen, I'm speaking.
Board, are we good with five days, like by Friday?
Okay, Shannon, make sure that by Friday, all trustees provide feedback. That way, we can post the agenda soon as, post it on the public.
I will request feedback from all trustees by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steen?
Well, I was going to say that, so, Mr. Garza, you wanted to put it out right away. And we can't do that and put drafts subject to revision on it?
Here's the issue, and I understand why Shannon's pushing back. The issue is you all, whatever changes that you want from the version that you were presented with today have to be voted on by the other board members. We're not just going to accept them and send that back to you for deliberation. So, my ask of you would be, you know, if you have amendments, let us know that. We will take those amendments up at the next board meeting, one at a time. And if we can just post a clean version of today's version of the deal, we'll come back at the next board meeting and we'll work through it. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so, everybody's in agreement? Mr. Steen, are you in agreement?
Well, yes, but I wanted to mention something. That action item number two, I was saying, put my reasons down if we voted on it today, so you can scratch that off.
Okay, we did vote today. We did vote today. You voted against the amendments. Would you like me to include the reasons for you voting no? First, we voted against, today we had a motion to approve the amendments. That motion did not carry. Then, we had a subsequent motion to put the item back on the agenda for consideration at the March 25th meeting. That motion was unanimously approved.
All right, well, it's fine, thank you.
Okay. I have a clarifying question, so I do not get this wrong because the process seemed very important to this board. Today, I will post the current draft for public. If we have consensus changes prior to the next board meeting, would you like me to post the then-current draft with the board materials prior to the meeting?
I think we go with what Rudy...
Well, what Rudy said. We're going to go with what Rudy said. Rudy, want to again reiterate it, please?
I don't need it reiterated. I wanted to make sure that if there were changes between now and then, did we repost? And we will not...
No, we're going to discuss them in public. Okay, I think we reviewed action items. If we can go ahead and move to item number 11, which is executive session.
Yes, ma'am. As a close-out to the action items, I did just want to take just a moment to recognize the contributions of Board Relations employee, Lilia Carpenter. She is taking on an opportunity in another group of the organization. So, I wanted to publicly thank her for all the work that she's done to make these meetings go smooth.
Lily, can you come up just real quick before we go into executive session? I'm sorry I left that out. I didn't want to put her in a spot because she did share it with me. But I do want to thank you, Lily. I think you've been amazing. You've been a great support to the board. You will be Miss. You have some large shoes to fill. He has some large shoes to fill. So, I just want to point that out, no pressure. Anybody else want to say anything to Lily?
I think you do a wonderful job. And can you tell us, can you tell us where you're headed and what you're going to be doing?
Yes, sir. I will be moving to Ana Lozano's team, the Product Development and Innovation Team, and I'll be working as a product analyst.
Be sorry to lose you, so.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving all of you.
Shannon, can you introduce Tony?
Yes, I absolutely will. I also will take this moment then to introduce our new Board Relations Manager, Tony Ramirez. And Tony, I will not go through a little bit about you because I think you will probably get that question.
We can't hear you, sorry.
Better? Sorry. No, looking forward to working with each and every one of you. I think I have worked with some of you in the past, so looking forward to working with you. I know I have some big shoes to fill.
All right, well, thank you so much. And we can go ahead and continue to executive session because I know we have a couple of big items to discuss.
At this time, the board is going to recess and do executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including attorney-client consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, competitive matters to deliberate voter-take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086, and security personnel and devices under Section 551.076 to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section 551.089, and to deliberate under Texas Government Code under Section 418.183 Subsection F about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in an open session, continue the meeting. It is 2:47 PM as we go to executive session.
We're going to take about two minutes before we resume the next item, okay? Ms. Fambides, for item number 10, if you could please have us return from executive session.
Yes, ma'am. It is 3:21 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum and all members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Fambides. Does the board have any questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting? Moved by the mayor first and then second by Dr. Romero. Okay, we're officially calling the meeting to end. The time is 3:21. And then in between, before we start the next meeting, we're going to take a two-minute break. Make it five. Make it three, the mayor said. Three it is. Going ahead and start the PFC meeting. The time is 3:24. I'd like to call again officially the meeting to order at 3:24. Ms. Fambides, can you please confirm the quorum?
Yes, ma'am. We have yourself president. We have Dr. Romero as vice president, Rudy Garza as assistant vice president, Mayor Norenberg as director, Ora Kaczynski as director, Mr. Steen as director, and Dr. Mackey as director. All members are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item is public comment. Ms. Lilly Carpenter, can you please proceed with public comment?
Yes, ma'am. For this meeting, we have one in-person speaker. The speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, please cue the timer. Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang, Lulac, and Growing Up Brown. I am very much interested in the transition from coal to whatever alternative energy that we're doing. So I asked the person in charge if he would give me a tour, and he said yes, but mostly what I know that I heard is that they're already in transition and they're changing for the new and/or type of work that they're going to get, and that makes me very happy. But I do personally want to thank all the workers that work in the coal, not coal mines, but coal plants, and thank them for their dedication and hard work because working with coal is not easy. I know I lived in Europe and I had to put up with coal, so it's not easy when you handle those particles that fall from the coal. So that's why I'm basically here, but I got my question answered, and that makes me very happy. And Mr. CEO Rudy, all I can tell you is the community is appreciative of your hard work and your dedication because you have turned this CPS Energy around. And I know and I see it because I stop at work sites, or if I see a worker and I see the CPS logo in it, I make sure I stop them. Mr. Norenberg, you're not far behind. They love you too. But that was my main concern. I am very proud of CPS Energy, mostly the workers, because without them, none of us would be here. Thank you.
Thank you. We can go ahead and move to item number three, which is approval of the consent agenda. We have eight minutes of the PFC meeting held on July 31, 2023. B, financial authorization or approval policy for banking and investment. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Ma'am, prior to the motion, may I make one clarifying remark for the group?
Please do.
I just want to note that if you take a look at the materials that were provided to you, you will note that there was no red line that was provided. A red line is required for any changes that are made, and my appreciation to our trustee for pointing out that no red line was provided. There are no changes other than the effective date, which will be updated. I also want to note that the resolution that was provided will need a change. There was an error, so it is on the last page of that section of your materials is the draft resolution. If you will please look at the third whereas statement that begins, whereas PFC has a proposed, that sentence will now read in full, whereas PFC has proposed a change to the effective date. So when you are voting to approve this resolution, that sentence will be changed. Do I have any questions on the material that's presented to you or what you're being asked to approve?
Can you again repeat the red line?
Yes, absolutely. I'll repeat the whole thing just for clarification and apologize because any confusion is my responsibility. Please note that in the materials, you will note that there is no red line provided. A red line is required for any changes. The only change is the effective date, which will be updated. If you look at the resolution that is being presented to you, the third whereas statement will now read, whereas PFC has proposed a change to the effective date. So as you vote on the item in the consent agenda, you will see no red line, there's no changes, and the resolution has one change to the third whereas statement. to the third whereas statement.
I move approval.
Second. Does the board have any further discussions before we vote? Right. Well, thank you, Ms. Farmitas.
Do you want to -- I thought it was obvious. All in favor?
Yeah, well, I was going to say roll call. That's why I said roll call. Then you looked at me like we're done.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and move to item number four, which is resolution for election of officers? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution of officers, but you might want to go ahead and, again, reiterate who the officers are?
Yes, absolutely. I also want to clarify, this is a bit of belt and suspenders on our behalf and to try to keep our processes consistent across the various organizations. We have decided to go ahead and do the resolution for election of officers annually, even though it is not required because we have already approved the terms and the terms expire. So just to be clear, this is not required, but it also is just confirming what will occur this year. That would be Janie Gonzalez for President, Francine Romero for Vice President, Rudy Garza as Assistant Vice President, myself for Secretary, Julie Johnson Assistant Secretary, David Ramirez Treasurer, and Kevin Paulo as Executive Director. All of this is included in the resolution for the election of officers, which is included in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
And I've got a comment.
And, Mr. Steen.
So if you focus on that third recital, it reads, whereas on February 27, 2023, the Board of Directors elected a slate of officers to serve the corporation for terms that expired January 21, 2024. So the terms of the officers elected last year ended over a month ago. And on the face of this, this creates an issue because arguably if their terms have expired, the authority of these officers to act, sign documents, et cetera, can be challenged -- questions are challenged. And I looked through the bylaws, and unless I missed it, I don't see specific language that permits officers to hold over after their terms have expired. In the first recital of the proposed resolution, there's a reference to Article VII of the Articles of Incorporation, which I've not seen the Articles of Incorporation. So I was asking Ms. Ramirez earlier, do you know if there's holdover language in the Articles of Incorporation? When I say holdover language, it's when you add such members shall continue to hold office until his or her successor is appointed. And just a thought, I don't want to belabor it, but why are we creating a potential problem by doing things this way? And my suggestion would be starting next year and henceforth, we schedule our PFC board meetings prior to January 31 so that we can elect/reelect our officers before their terms expire. And maybe we could add this to our list of action items pursuant to Agenda Five, Agenda Item Five. Thanks, that's all I have.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. And also, I do want to note, just for clarity, that no actions were taken by the officers within January 31, 2024 to now. And if it's without objection from the rest of the trustees, I will also attempt to schedule this meeting prior to January 31 each year. We have a motion in a second. Would you like me to poll the trustees?
I remember I'm trying, but, you know, it's getting hijacked.
Trustee, Dr. Mackey?
This is a motion to approve the resolution for the election of officers. Trustee Steen?
Wait, do you have a comment?
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And, trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Mr. Kaczynski?
Approved.
Who she carries?
Okay. I don't think we have any further discussion. Item number five would be to close out. Ms. Julie Johnson, can she could proceed with the review of action items?
I think the one that I definitely noted was the issue related to board meeting scheduling for next year. I think that is the only item.
That is correct. Okay, we can have an official adjournment of the meeting adjourns at 3:35.